Good evening and welcome to the Heartland Township Planning Commission Meeting of August 14th. We'd like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Thank you, Clerk Hopkins. Commissioner Hopkins, could you please take call?
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Commissioner Newsom?
Here.
Commissioner Hopkins here. Commissioner Grissom?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Murphy?
Here.
Commissioner Voight?
Here.
Chairperson Fox?
Here.
We have quorum of the Planning Commission. We also have present Township Planner Kim Scherschlik.
I'd be here.
All right, thank you. Next up, item four, approval of the meeting agenda.
I move to approve the meeting agenda of the Planning Commission for August 14th, 2014 as presented.
That's important.
All right, we have a motion to approve from Commissioner Mitchell, a second from Commissioner Newsom. Are there any changes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those nay, motion carries. Next up, approval of our meeting minutes.
Move to approve the meeting minutes from June 26, 2014.
Second aye.
We have a motion to approve from Commissioner Hopkins, second from Commissioner Voight. Are there any changes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those nay, motion carries. Next up, another approval of meeting minutes, please.
I move to approve the meeting minutes of July 10, 2014.
Aye, second.
We have a motion from Commissioner Grissom, a second from Commissioner Murphy. Are there any changes? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those nay, motion carries. Next up, item seven, call to the public. Anyone this evening want to address the commission? Okay, seeing none, we'll move past item eight. We have no public hearing. And our first item of business is a revised site plan application number 526. This is for a stone pro expansion. I think at this time, what I'd like to do is turn it over to our Township Planner, Kim Scherschlik, and Laura Jorth.
Good evening Commissioners, Kim Scherschlik on behalf of planning staff. The first item before you is consideration of stone pro storage building. This is site plan application number 526. The request is for a site plan approval for construction of a proposed 4,800 square foot cold storage building that is on the existing site and that site is located at 800 North Old US 23. Planning Commission considered this application at its July 10th meeting and raised a number of concerns. Approval was not granted at that time and the PC advised the applicant to revise and resubmit. Several changes have now been made by the applicant and I will go over those very briefly. The first was with regard to the dumpster enclosure. The applicant has added two 10-foot white pines to screen the dumpster enclosure. The second was related to off-street parking. The PC advised the applicant to include an actual breakdown in the existing parking spaces and this was provided on the revised site plan. The third was if the PC asked that landscaping be added to the loading area on the west side of the building and five white pine, white spruce, and one maple have been added in that location. The fourth item had to do with the overall landscaping and with the changes just described, the overall number of trees has increased, but it should be noted that the elms have decreased from six to two. Lighting, the pole-mounted fixtures will be directed down and the applicant has agreed to actually put a note on the site plan to that effect so that we have that recorded on the plan itself. And the new wall packs will be shielded and there are cut sheets included for those new wall packs in the revised site plan. Terms of the architectural waiver, which was probably the most significant issue, the design of the west side of the building has been revised per the direction of the Planning Commission and the revised elevation now proposes zero brick but more than 50 percent stone. In fact, that entire elevation is now shown as a cultured stone. This still does require a waiver, however, this change is intended to meet the concerns that the Planning Commission expressed. Also, a note has been added referencing the new paint color for both the existing and the proposed building. And finally, the applicant has indicated that he will be applying for a sign permit to bring the current signs into full compliance with the zoning ordinance. And in light of the proposed changes that appear to address the Planning Commission's concern, staff is recommending approval with the conditions that are detailed in the staff report.
Okay, thank you. Stan, did you want to add anything or you want to come?
Why don't you come up to the table here so they can hear you at home? We've done everything that you guys suggested to do. You see that note on the print? The one thing that I did not have was the particular wall pack that we picked out, it just didn't have shielded signs. You can get optional shielded signs for the wall packs I expect out, but I also got another cut sheet coming with this new wall pack. So they all will be directed down. Other than that, nothing that you guys asked.
Okay. Well, let's take a look at the Planning Department's letter real quick and make sure everyone's comfortable. I think, if you want, you can have a seat there. Page two, we'd start out with the issues that we had, the dumpster enclosure. Do you find that the addition of the two white pines is going to provide the screening that you were looking for?
I think it sounds great.
Sure.
Okay, so we've determined that the screening is sufficient. Next up would be the off-street parking. They have included the table on the print now that was in a document previously, but now it's actually on the plan. So the third item was the loading area and the need for additional landscaping. They have made the adjustment, as Kim had said, in regards to the addition of the five white spruce and the maple. Seems like they removed something. Is that where the elms were, Kim? Yeah, okay.
But they're white pines, not white spruce being added, just a clarification on that, okay?
Yep. All right. Are you satisfied with that?
I got one comment on that. I just wondered if those trees could be, I don't know if the line could be altered back and forth, because really the tree that is the furthest to the south doesn't screen the loading space, it really screens the building. And I thought maybe if they drew those trees together in some way, either by staggering them or just straight together, that it would screen the loading area rather than screen that one corner of the building.
Larry, do you guys want to put that, you want to put a notation on there where you want it?
Talking about exactly.
Well, do you understand what I'm?
I kind of do, yeah.
Yeah. So this tree here really doesn't block the loading space. So I'd just like to see you draw these closer together. And I understand that you don't want to plant them too close together, but maybe you could get the effect by, you know, dropping this one or pulling this one forward and pulling this one over, this one forward and that one over, so they aren't any closer together, but you're looking at them.
You're trying to kind of like shield the loading area from?
Yeah.
Yeah. Kim, do you have that?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments on loading area screening? Next up was the fourth item on the list, the landscaping. And it just is our satisfaction that the landscaping plan now with the dumpster and the loading space is satisfactory. Lighting, how would you suggest we handle it, just in regards to his different shielding? Just make a note within our?
Yeah, I think that what Dave said, just make it a condition that he provide the correct cut sheet with his stamping plan set. I think that's what Dave is.
Okay. Yep, okay. Everyone satisfied with that?
I had a question on the lighting. On which buildings and where were they going? Because on the plans, I don't notice any lights unless I'm missing them.
They're very difficult to see.
I'm sorry?
They're very difficult to see. They are on there.
They are?
Yeah.
Five. Four replaced out the existing.
Okay. As long as you see them, and they're not showing in the elevations, at least that I noticed, but as long as you notice them.
Yep, they're on the front sheet.
What page would that be?
They're on this page.
The front.
Up to the loading dock.
So they're showing on that?
See, it says wall packs, five locations.
Got it, okay. Now I see it, thank you. I was looking at the detailed sheet where I might have expected to see that.
Yeah, they're on this page.
Thank you.
Any other comments on lighting? Architectural waiver. Last, we had a meeting, we talked about brick and they were working with stone. Are you comfortable with the west elevation being all stone now versus the brick? Any other questions on architecture? When we get to the motion, we'll deal with those. You'll see there are two.
Yeah, like that louver up in the peak, rather than running the stone all the way up in there, if they could add something to that.
Okay. Let's see, page four, signs, just understanding that they're going to deal with the sign issue and a sign permit for the land use permit is issued.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Obviously, I'm beginning to apply for a land use permit. He agrees to change the signs. I talked to Dave and he said he would talk to you, but I'm not applying for a land use or get a land use immediately. Can I take down the sign that's there? We'll take it down to get a land use. Will apply for a sign when I'm applying for a land use. I just want to get the land use because for, once I get my land use, I'm a long way from getting the building. And it's my customer's.
So, Kim, do you know what signs are, are both the monument sign and the wall sign non-compliant?
My understanding is that there are two that are not in compliance and that there has to be an application for correction of both of the issues.
The sign that's on the back of the building facing east, facing US 23, I guess it was a group sign, but it was stolen around the end, so he's already removed the stone. Because I did that right away. The stone, the monument sign is, I think it's too big. It's good as existing, but it's too big. He has to move that back away from the road. He's agreeing with it. So I can fill out that application, get that moving, like land use. I have to take it down, I'll take it down. And there'll be no sign there. So he just?
When you apply for a land use permit, how long does that take? Is that a stand at the counter or does that take a day or two to process?
It actually does not take long, but that is presuming everything has been cleaned up with the site plan.
Yep.
And actually, you can come in immediately and address the sign issues and I think that would maybe something?
Simultaneously.
Yes, yes, and take care of that one. Right now, there certainly is nothing preventing compliance with the zoning ordinance regarding the signs at this point.
There was talk of the last meeting, that he get land use and all signs.
I think they were looking for the sign permit to be done, so you could come in for both. They'll stamp the sign permit first and you'll get your land use permit stamped second. Sounds like that may be able to happen.
Well, that's not really what the condition that he has in here says. It says applicant bring the existing site signage, including existing wall sign and monument sign into compliance with current standards of zoning orders and obtain necessary sign permits prior issuance of land.
And I'm reading the paragraph above that just says the applicant apply for a sign permit to bring the existing site into full compliance.
Where are you at?
Top of the page. I didn't read the.
Is that why?
Page four.
I want to receive a sign permit to bring. Yeah, well, we can, I mean, either we'd have to change that wording in the motion or he'd have to take that sign. And I know the sign has been out of compliance for a long period of time, back to even margin trying to deal with it. And I understand us wanting to get it compliant before we're willing to go further.
That's fine.
If that means him taking it down, I mean, it.
I just want to understand if I was going to go like you said, I'll fully take down the sign.
Marty can never give it down.
I just want to stick with what Dave said. I'll apply for a sign at the same time. And if my land use is not held up for the sign, I'd like to take it down.
I would recommend we stick with the motion, knowing the history of the site.
Yep, and if they take it down, they'll be compliant because they're not.
They're not there. Well, there you go.
Here we can share that with you.
So if we stick with the sign issue as the motion reads, we'll be fine. That'll be clear of it. Any other questions or comments on signs? Township Engineers Review recommending approval subject to relatively minor details being addressed on the construction plans. Fire Marshal recommending approval subject to a number of conditions being satisfied prior to the certificate of occupancy. So those are probably two things we see. If you flip to page six, if you're so inclined, there are two motions required on this if you're so inclined to make those. The first would be the architectural waiver and then the second would be the site plan.
Page numbers are all three.
Are they?
Yeah.
What page are you on? I'm on five. Five or six?
Five.
Oh, page five.
You're trying to expose that. We will.
It happens. It happens. All right, thanks. I move to. You ready? Yes. I move to waive the architectural and building materials standards of section 5.24 of the Township Ordinance based on a finding of the following. The proposed design and materials of the new building and the proposed enhancements to the existing building are consistent with the intent and purpose of section 5.24. The design elements of the new building in conjunction with the proposed improvements to the new building will bring the site closer to compliance with the standards of section 5.24. Coordination of the materials and colors proposed for both buildings will create a cohesive visual appearance. Okay, we have a motion to waive the architectural and building materials standards from Commissioner Voight and a second from Commissioner Newsom. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those nay, motion carries. Now the second one, please.
So before we go about this, I think we should strike number two, right? Because the waiver was just approved.
Correct.
Okay. I don't think that should be in motion if anybody decides to move it.
Okay, anybody like to read?
I move to approve revised site plan application number 526, stone pro storage building subject to the following conditions. I don't think there's any, I don't think number one is needed either because we agree to what he's done already, right?
Want to add something about staggering the tree?
Yeah. One, that the trees used to screen the loading area on the front on the west side of the proposed building be drawn closer together as discussed tonight. The applicant bring the existing site signage, including the existing wall signage and monument sign into compliance with current standards of the zoning ordinance and obtain the necessary sign permits prior to issuance of a land use permit for the proposed expansion. The applicant include a note on the stamping sets verifying that existing pole-mounted lights will be reoriented to be downward directed. Applicant amend sheet AS 102 of the stamping set to show fully shielded downward directed wall packs is distributed here tonight. Satisfaction of the conditions outlined in Township Engineers Review Letter dated June 26, 2014 may satisfy the conditions outlined in the Fire Marshal's Review Letter dated June 25, 2014.
I'll support that. Okay, we have a motion to approve the revised site plan application number 526 from Commissioner Hopkins, a second from Commissioner Voight. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those nay, motion carries. Congratulations and thank you.
Well, thank you guys. One thing I want to point out with Dave's example. Great.
Good. Very good. Well, if you got to work with Kim and Dave's app, she's great too.
Thanks again.
All right, congratulations and thank you. Yep. Next up is item 9B. This is the River Community Church Plan Development Site Plan number 511, a minor change determination by the Planning Commission. And again, I think I'd like to turn it over to Kim.
The second item before the commission this evening is a process question and it is a request for a determination as to whether or not the proposed addition of a maintenance building to the River Church site plan is in fact a minor change and therefore subject to the standard site review process. If not, the proposed change would be subject to the full plan development review process which includes six different meetings. The River Church site now under construction is located on the north side of M 59 and is west of Cullen Road. The criteria for the determination is listed in the staff report, but to summarize, number one is such changes will not adversely affect the initial basis for granting approval. And the second is that such minor changes will not adversely affect the overall plan development in light of the intent and purpose of such development as set forth in the intent section of the plan development district provisions. In motion language, for each option is offered for Planning Commission consideration in the staff report.
Okay. Do you have a site plan of?
Yes, I'll bring that up.
Okay. Well, Mark, would you like to add anything that has already been said?
No, actually with the site plan, Dave asked me to kind of point it out, really it's going to be determined more by foxes here. Both sides of the world, B is what I see dumpster area and those are regular 10 by 20 parking lots will take way up to no more than six of the existing, six of the structure. And that will tuck in, give more screening to the dumpster area, plus be easier access to that.
Okay.
And it's not just maintenance, it really would have the function that we recognize a huge efficiency in storage and with going through what we have in forming our site, what we're going to be bringing over, improvement. And so rather than put this part of the building after the sprinkler cabinet detached allows us to have maintenance facility plus cold storage for our property.
Okay, very good. So what the Planning Commission is going to do here is try and just make a determination, do you find this to be a minor change to the site plan or something greater than that? And at this point, they're just talking about the addition of the maintenance storage building. It's not approval of the building, as Kim said, it's just, is this a minor change to the plan? Is there any question?
Do you have a, just a size range that you can give us, maximum size?
Well, if we took the parking, it goes 40 by 60, but depending on how the fox comes in, it may, no more than 40 by 60.
No more than 40 by 60. Just a single story?
I'm trying to use added thrust so that it would be a lot here and above.
Okay.
Any other questions? Anytime they're willing to reduce the size of improved soil is always good.
Any other questions or thoughts as to where this may lead?
I think it could be a minor change. You know, it'll go through its normal process, but certainly it's not significant in size to the project itself and it isn't really changing the use of any sorts by doing that or adding an additional. Yeah, I think it meets the criteria, put my, that's the big question. So if you're so inclined on page two, down about the upper third, you will see a suggested motion.
I'll make a motion to move to make the determination that the detached maintenance building for the River Community Church is a minor change to the plan development, final site plan, based on findings that the change will not adversely affect the initial basis for granting approval and the change will not adversely affect the overall planning, plan development in light of the intent and purposes of such development.
Support. Okay, we have a motion to determine that this is a minor change from Commissioner Newsom, a second from Commissioner Murphy. Any further discussion?
Commissioner Mitchell.
Who'd I say? Oh, Mitchell, I'm sorry.
I'd be fine with it, but.
I must be off today. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those nay, motion carries. Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, next up, item 9C, the Cobblestone Preserve Plan Development Site Plan number 269 and number 348. This is also a minor change determination. I think again, I'll turn it over to Kim.
The third item before the commission is also a process question and is also a request for a determination whether a proposed change to a plan development should be considered a minor change. This specific request relates to the Cobblestone Preserve Development, which is located north of Bergen Road and west of Old 23. The developer is interested in subdividing unit 49, which currently is two acres, into four individual units of approximately one-half acre each, which is generally consistent with the remainder of the development. The developer is, this particular division was contemplated when the original approval was granted in 1999 and a copy of the master deed has been included for your review and you can see that there is a line in there that actually states that. The reason it was not done initially is because the land did not perk at that time and the desire was to wait until sewer came down Bergen Road and then consider that division at that time. And sewer is available, so that is the reason that this is before the commissioner. The language is just fuzzy enough unfortunately that it was believed that it should go to the Planning Commission for a formal determination and that is the reason it's before you today. If the Planning Commission does determine that this is a minor change, then staff is also requesting that there is an additional motion allowing for administrative authority to process that administratively, basically. And it's because this would be considered a minor enough change to an existing site plan that it really wouldn't warrant a full review. So those are the two issues before the Planning Commission now.
Okay. And are you, Marshall Plow?
I am.
Would you like to come forward? Do you have anything that you would like to add?
I think the letter pretty much tells all the information. The only thing I could add is back in 1999, if you look at our original preliminary site plan, we actually had four home sites where unit 49 is now. And we had very, very marginal soils there. When we had our equipment moved in to start building the roads and putting in the storm sewers, they decided to park their equipment on that, what became unit 49, compacted the soil and that's why we couldn't use it anymore. So there was talk back at that time of sewers being in the next three, four years. We chose to wait for the sewers. We did put some language, as Kim mentioned, in our master deed. We did put some language, as Kim mentioned, in our master deed anticipating going back to the four sites when the sewers came along. And we also designated a 30-foot wide easement anticipating the sewers. The township board insisted that we put language in the master deed stating that all of the owners must hook into the sewer when it became available. And there's also language in the master deed at the request of the township board saying all of the homes must be built with leaves or stuffs out to the road to make it easier to tie them to the sewer. So when sewers came around finally down Bergen Road about eight years ago, we were excited because we thought we could get back to our four sites that we originally had laid out. And for whatever reason, the township decided not to run it into Cobblestone. So it's still not in Cobblestone. We're willing to pay to put it into Cobblestone just for these four sites, and that's why we're here this evening.
Okay. Any questions from the commission for either Kim or the applicant?
What size main are you putting in for the four houses?
We're going to put in a pressure sewer. It'll be a two-inch size.
Okay. And that'll go out to Bergen Road?
Go out to Bergen Road. We have to bore Bergen Road to make the path.
All right. So you're really not adding any kind of a main into the subdivision?
No. It's a two-inch pressure sewer to serve these four sites.
Okay. I was confused, so I wanted to clarify that.
And then I think I read if the sewer goes into Cobblestone, then that will come out, most likely, if that's the way it's engineered.
That's the way... That's the plan, yes.
I will move to make the determination that the division of Unit 49 of Cobblestone Preserve into four units is a minor change to the Plan Development Final Site Plan number 269 based on a finding that the change will not adversely affect the initial basis for granting approval, and the change will not adversely affect the overall Plan Development in light of the intent and purpose of such development. And the division was anticipated in Section 10 of the approved and recorded master deed for said condominium.
Support that. We have a motion to determine this is a minor change from Commissioner Hopkins, a second from Commissioner Voight. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Now, if you so choose, there is a request for the second motion, which will be found on the bottom of page three.
I move to grant administrative authority to the township staff and consultants to process the request to divide Unit 49 of Cobblestone Preserve into four units consistent with the plan submitted as replat number two of Livingston County Subdivision Plan number 201, including a review and approval of the amended master deed.
Support. Okay, we have a motion to grant administrative authority for this change from Commissioner Grissom and a second from Commissioner Mitchell. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Congratulations and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yep.
By the way, I'd like to add to the first applicant's comment. The planning partner is very, very thoughtful, very knowledgeable, very professional. We don't always agree with him, but he did a fine job.
Well, very good.
Deal, thank you.
It's good to hear. Thank you. Next up would be item D, and this is a discussion on the zoning map discrepancy in the Heartland Village. Once again, I'll turn it to Kim.
The fourth item before the commission is an information memo pertaining to a zoning map discrepancy in the village of Heartland. The owner of a property that's located at the southwest corner of Phelps and Avon recently asked for verification zoning. And when she bought the property in 2006, she indicated that she thought it was zone limited commercial, whereas the current map shows it to be settlement residential. Staff researched this, and as the commissioners can see from the packet maps, which I'll show in just a moment, it appears that the map... that the line has actually kind of migrated through a series of maps, so that we now have a fairly significant issue with that. Now, the problem comes up in that this is... can't really be just an interpretation because the entire zoning map was readopted just recently with the codification of the zoning ordinance. So it does not appear that there ever was any formal rezoning of these properties, and staff has done a lot of research on that. But staff is requesting that if you have any history on this or any additional background that we might not be aware of, if you could share that at this time. And then we will go back and determine the best process and bring that forward to you for a formal resolution.
So there's no action needed tonight, just a discussion and making us aware of the situation? As Kim asked, if anybody knows anything or recalls anything, they're asking for our help.
Which site are we talking about specifically?
The site is at the corner of... and let me see, I think if I go down a little bit further here, best to see it. The actual property is at the corner of Phelps and Avon. And I think this... Well, these... On these old maps, on the older maps, it's... Yeah, it's not... I'm going to go going here. This is probably... This is the property right here. Can everyone see that?
This one is... I think so.
Okay.
Sorry, could you point at it again?
Yeah, it's right here.
I don't see the cursor.
Neither.
Okay. So it's in the dark purple right now?
It is in the light pink.
It's in the light pink?
Yes.
I see Phelps. If you look at the map from, well, 2003 and before, and it looks like...
It's the one that's right here.
It takes this line, and it goes across the street. Or ways. Well, now, if you look at the... I'm sorry. If you look at the 2003, it goes up to here, the L.C., which would be where the village market is now. And then it comes across the street, comes down to here, and I think comes over here and catches the music hall, and comes back out to the street, comes down. Looks like it comes in and catches this house here, or that lot there.
Yeah.
And then comes straight down all the way to Kraus, to me.
Is it the bump out that goes... Is that what you're saying? This piece right here is where this house is, this property?
Well, I think there's two pieces of property there.
These two right here.
Oh, okay. These right here?
Yep.
She thinks they're commercial, or she...
No, I think that... What I'm thinking is that those two remain STR.
Right.
The music hall, the one lot that's in the south of the next two residents that are across from Maple, that one, looks like it would be STR, and then everything down all the way to Avon. Now, I know that at one point in time, this first piece of property here, this from reading the history books, had... Was involved in the chromane craft, pieces of property in the village. So I can understand that maybe that kept that kind of limited commercial. It wasn't a straight residential. And I know this one here, which is where the Rubies live now, is that big white house on the corner. And I know that one, they say, used to be a stagecoach stop. So it would make sense that at some time or another, when they put a zone in here, was unlimited commercial. And it looks to me like they just took that same line all the way down. That is in here. And the museum is right at the corner there.
There is a question to me, if we go back to the 1990 map, right in the area where you're at there, Larry, is it the one lot or two lots that would be in that little white area?
Two.
Well...
I think it's two.
For sure on the 2003 map, there is, by what I'm seeing. But if you go back to the 1990... I don't know which parcel is in question, but I'm just curious if there's some interpretation there where that line belongs. You know, north to south, it should be bumped up one more lot, or it's just right where it falls. Kind of hard to tell by that and by this Xerox, you know, copy that we all have. And it looks like it's been highlighted also. So you might have to see the original, you know, and maybe it's... Maybe it just looks a lot thicker in this 1990 than it maybe really is. But then it looks like the road... Is that Phelps Street? Is that the street? Looks like it follows the north and the Phelps. And maybe it doesn't even get into that first lot from, you know, 03 now. Just kind of hard to tell with this.
Yeah.
Maybe the originals would shed a little more light on where that exactly is.
Well, I think in the end, this ends up being a question of whether you think these pieces of property should just all be rezoned.
Yeah, right. Sure. Right.
Or L.C.
Yeah, that's what I...
Yeah.
Yeah. Because that's what I would argue, that you should rezone both sides of the street all the way up to the cemetery as STR. I mean, you gotta...
L.C. You said that earlier, and that's why I kept reading.
There's an insurance company that's like right there.
Yeah.
You know, it's out of a home, but...
But for this... I mean, this was brought up for one particular lot, though, right? We need to make a determination. So...
Yes. What the question is primarily is, is there any additional history on this? Because there is no map correction provision in our zoning ordinance, this would have to go through a full process. And that would begin by contacting all of those individuals that would be impacted by this. What complicates it is that because our future land use map actually shows that zone... It shows all of those sites as being future STR, that would make a rezoning not in compliance with our future land use plan. So because we are in the process, though, of updating that soon, we can kind of put those two and do them in conjunction with one another. That is the director's slot at this point, if that sounds reasonable.
So does the future land use map show stuff to the east of Avon as L.C.? Or is it...
To the... No, no. It shows it to... Yes, to the east, it's all as is. And that property already is zoned, and yes, that is shown to continue to be L.C.
Yeah. Well, my bet is, is when they looked at that future land use map, they were in the midst of this migration of this line and thought the L.C. line was down the center of the road and just kept it that way.
But so what you're saying, if you find a discrepancy or a mistake in the lines on the map, there's no way to change it without going through a full rezoning?
There are two options in there. One is for an interpretation by the Zoning Board of Appeals. Now, that generally applies if there's one property at question and if there is, in fact, like split zoning on a property. But something like this is fairly major and would be subject to a full rezoning. I mean, that's a pretty major...
If we were to redraw the lines completely, but if we were to just make a determination on the one property, that can be done at the ZBA, is what you're saying?
No, that could have been done prior to the adoption of... We just recently adopted this, so it really formalized this. If this issue had come up, say, in 2010, yes, that would have been an option because it still looked like it was some... There was... The line divided the property. But this... The way it is in the current zoning ordinance, it is very clear cut that Avon is supposed to be the dividing line.
And that's the 2007 map? Or no, that's the future land use map?
That would be the... Our most recent one would be the 2012. Is that...
11?
11.
2011?
Yes.
No. I mean, that's the future land use map.
Yeah, what is she...
I mean, she's referring to the zoning...
Oh, the zoning map.
The zoning map, that's right.
As part of...
Right. Which is this map? Which is the map you've got that's listed here as 2007?
No, we just did one when we did...
The digital...
That's right. We adopted a new map and maybe even part... One of the amendments we might have even done.
And this has been redrawn since then, is what I'm getting at? Or is it the same kind of... It's the same map, just in the latest ordinance?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
It is... It has not changed...
Still has that one...
The way it is currently, and I apologize, it doesn't appear to be in this packet, the most recent one shows the line down Avon.
Oh.
Well, that's basically what this is showing, down Avon.
Down Avon, except for the jog.
Except for the music hall.
Music hall.
But as is stated, there's already a vet clinic on the other side.
Which now makes that nonconforming, right? Which, if you just purchased that business, may be a big concern. If you purchased it assuming that it was commercial, now you find out...
Well, it was a closed office. It was a closed office.
It's just an interesting change between 03 and 07.
Yeah. Well, I mean, the whole buildings, all the whole grid structure looks like it was updated.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah.
Well, I'm going to tell you that the original map, right, from 1990, was done with a pencil, right? And then 96, it was done as a computer drawing, I'm sure.
Yeah.
And from there on, it's all computer. So my thought is if it goes... If there was ever a point that it appeared that it was commercial on that side of Avon, I don't know how it ever changed, you know, without being an error to going down the center of the street.
Right. The truth of the matter is, though, when you adopt a new map...
It is what it is.
That's it only.
It is what it is. That's what I'm...
So the only way to get it back is to do another rezoning.
But it sounds like we might want to do that anyway, to bring more of those properties kind of into where they need to be.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, particularly depending on what your vision is for downtown.
Right.
Right.
If you envision there being small businesses, like insurance agencies and small vet clinics and that, I think you're going to take that into deep consideration.
I may just add one point. Under L.C., it's an unusual zoning district because it actually does allow for single-family residential uses in addition to the business uses.
Right.
So it's kind of a win-win in that you wouldn't end up with a nonconform residential, which would be a concern.
Great point. That makes it a lot easier.
Yeah, but if you saw it as an L.C., if it really wasn't...
Well, you probably can't right now.
No.
That's the issue, I think, that brought this up. So we didn't help you. We cleared it up like mud, didn't we?
We could make the suggestion that there's someone that reviewed and is probably going to be included in the next plan, future land use plan, right?
I don't think they're going to wait.
No.
I think they're going to run it concurrent with a master plan revision.
That is my intent of kind of the director's direction on this. And this information is very helpful because we know that it likely is a mistake, and it wasn't anything that anybody has any other background on. So thank you.
Okay. My public has left us, at least those in attendance, so we'll move to item 11, the Planner's Report. Do you have anything for us tonight, Kim?
I have nothing for you additional.
Okay, thank you. Committee reports. Anybody, anything?
Just really quick, would like to mention to the Planning Commission that the board is having a meeting... What are they called? Like a breakout meeting or a...
Work session?
Yeah, work session. Retreat, that's the word. On the 13th of September, I believe it is, and to work on a two-year strategic plan. After we have that meeting, we'll put together a joint meeting with the Planning Commission, again, to kind of discuss those things and hash them out before we finalize that strategic plan. plan.
Okay. Anybody, anything else? Now, we need a motion to adjourn, please.
So, move.
The second?
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Thank you and good night.